So I'm about to open the meeting. When we start the hearing, I'll ask you, you've got four, and I'll ask you if you consent to go forward with, we've got a quorum, but not our full five members here. It is 6:09 on July 2nd, 2019. My name is Charles Putnam. I'm the Chair of the Zoning Board of Adjustment of Rollinsford, and I call our meeting to order. The first item of business is called "Call by the Recording Secretary."
So we have Charles Putnam, who's the Chair, Andrea Cass, John Hensman, who are full members, and Paul Caziel, who is a applicant. This of the butters provided by the applicant were duly noticed, and notice was put into Foster's Stanley Democrat, and as well as around town to keep the locations.
And also, there were notices sent to a butters?
Yeah, oh, applicants were duly noticed.
And I note that there are four members of the board here tonight, and under our procedural rules, the applicant has the option, we have a hearing scheduled for Lorax Sustainable Development LLC. It's your hearing. Our rules normally require us to have five here. We have a quorum rule of three, so we have a quorum, and it's your choice whether to proceed with less than five members. And what you're giving up is that you can still ask for a re-hearing if you, should this fail, but the lack of a, the lack of a five-member board would not be allowed, so that's what you're doing.
I understand. Would like to proceed forward.
You'd like to proceed, all right. So what we will do is, we will begin the public hearing, and the Recording Secretary has already reported on the first case in terms of the notice provided to members of the public and the butters. And first item is to allow the applicant to make his presentation. Members of the board may ask you questions as you go along, but we'll try to let you build your candidacy.
Great. Thank you. My name is Bob Soul. I am Principal of Tricup Engineering, Jamie Silver. And this is Michael Brilbo. He is owner of Lorax Sustainable Development, the present owners of the property. This is a project that we've worked on with Mike a few months, and we went to the planning board a couple of months back on a conceptual basis to get our plan out there, get some feedback, and it was fairly well received at the time. But if I could, I'd kind of like to go over a little bit of the overall project information as far as where we're heading with this, and everybody, you guys can see this.
Well, members of the public, feel free to move about the room if you want to see if Mr. Silver goes along.
So we are proposing, this is the property previously owned by Dr. Bennett. This is a large Victorian home that he resided in, a carriage house that he was in the process of rehabbing, and a large, doesn't show up very good, but a large car barn that he built to house his classic car collection. It's a 10,000 square foot footprint that varies between three and five stories. It's a monster of a structure. So what this proposal is looking at, knowing this is, property's almost 11 acres of land, and we are proposing a seven lot, seven building lots, seven house lots, open space conservation subdivision, where we are providing the existing house that would be on a lot, the finished rehabbing, the carriage house that would be on its own lot, and then we've got five individual building lots, one here, and then two, three, four, five building lots. We've got a big expansive open space that goes along, along the river, and another big open space down here at the roadway. So that, that's the general concept of what we're trying to do. Mike acquired the property. He's going to preside in the house, but also is a builder by trade, and would like to build on the property. So when Mike came to us, it was him having a, how can we do a development that I want to live in? And clearly, the house is an outstanding piece of architecture, and Mike wants to be a good resident there. So what we've tried to do is look at, again, the open space subdivision regulations. What that allows us to do is to look more at where we want to build, where are the building sites, and less about furnitures and areas and things like that. The open space allows us to do things like leave this big open space in the front here, so that when you go by the project or you come into the project, this is the view that you get, which is the view that's here currently. It's a big field in the front, you've got two nice structures over there, and the proposed development is either tucked over to this side of the project, or this one is down, down that's not visible from the roadway. What I've got here is, pass a couple of these out. A couple of copies of that, and the first page is a picture of the car barn that you get, you get this long face of it along here when you come into driveway, press it along. It's a pretty monster structure there. But then the second photo is, is, this guy here, which is the next picture that is, as you go down around the back of the car barn, that was his drive-in, the garage concept, where he's got these overhead doors, and he came around and pulled in under it with all of his vehicles. But at that point, that's a pretty, a pretty significant structure. And again, that sits, that's this space here that just, that's what you see when you look at that end of the building, right there. So that's what we started with when Mike came and said, you know, this is, this is not what I want to do with the property, this is a structure from the previous owner, what can we, what can we do? As you get down in the package, the next thing we went to is, all right, this isn't what we want. What do we want? And this, this is the view that he wants when we finish, which is either the next photo, or there's a few that are fairly similar, that as you come in the road here on Scarlet Lane, you're going to be looking right down at these two structures as you were presently as you come in the driveway. And this is the open space that will be in front of the, in front of the property. So this is, this is, again, I think, open space subdivision. One of the great parts of that is preserve the viewscape. We've got big open space along the river that's what environmental open space, we've got this here that's a view, a view shot, streetscape, open space. So I think, I think what we're doing really fits in with the audience, and it's great that you guys have that flexibility and talent to approach it with one of these types of subdivision. So that's where we started. We started, we started working with, you know, how to lay things out, and the fact is that the barn was going to get torn down, and Mike can probably touch upon this a little bit as well. But as we presented to the planning board, once you get into the process of inquiring about demolition of this barn, is, is that, actually, the barn is made up of several historic barns within the barn. It's, they're antique timber pegged barns that are put together, and this miserable looking shell put over the outside of it, but there's actually four separate historic barns that make this up. And we brought, again, a little brochure from the company that Mike is working with that's going to do the barn restoration work with him.
We hired a company out of Berwick called Preservation Timberframe, and he came in to give me some advice, and he kept saying, wow, you've got no idea about the vinyl siding and the quality of the barns that are in there.
So the second sheet that you have there, I think is the most descriptive, that shows, just based on roofline, that there's three barns that jump out of your right way here, that this end here is a main structure here, that it's made up of this timber frame, timber pegged structure, and then you did little shed holders and et cetera to get the square footage up. But these are three individuals.
Fully intact.
Fully intact. They were dismantled somewhere and numbered and trucked here, put together piece by piece, and once you get in there, you really realize what a beautiful find it is. So the layout that we have is, put that here. Those four, four structures that are within there, we show on two of them here that would be, again, repurposed and put on the site and turned into, instead of barns, they would be timber, timber frame homes. So that is, that is the concept here, is to reuse the barn that's there in a very unique way and keep it on site, and it's kind of, as Mike says, the wow factor. It's kind of, it's kind of a neat project. It's not, it's not a cookie cutter way, and it means the property isn't, the property's a very special property, and I think what Mike intends to do is a curate. So that's where we're at with, as far as the overall project goes. Where it brings us to the zoning board adjustment is, what we have labeled on here is lots four and lot five, where we would like to, and I think the other side of this shows it better, is we would like to leave the 250-foot setback to the river. This is, this is the barn, this is the driveway that he's instructed to come in around down to here, that's a combination of concrete pavement in here and gravel drive that comes around. So this, these are a couple of natural building site locations, but we're within the 250-foot setback. So we're looking for relief from that, we're looking for, to build within up to 175 feet from the river, within very stringent guidelines. One, they would be on only lots four and five, and it would be limited to that 175-foot setback instead of 250-foot setback. And the amount of structure that we're going here wouldn't exceed the amount of structure that's already within that 250-foot setback. That we have, we have a barn here that's going to be taken out of that 250-foot setback and relocated on the property to an area that needs a setback. And then we have a big, a big chunk of the building where the 250-foot setback comes through there. So we've got a big chunk of this, including that, that big five-story front that is there, is already located within the 250-foot setback. So we're basically asking for a swap of building footprint from presently, as it's configured in an area here and an area here, that we want to configure in an area here and an area here. And again, as you can see by this picture here, this is the left side of that where we're proposing to decide a structure that, once the barn comes out, this is like a, again, a hole that was created, again, to get this drive around construction, constructed again in under the building. So we've got a lot of earthwork to do in there, and we think that, again, that there would be an even swap on square footage in an area that, again, we focused on leaving this as it is. This here side over here, in order to rebuild the barn, as Mike had proposed, this whole side gets blown up over here anyways, so this is where we're focusing the work. But we've got a couple of very, very nice building sites, but we do not need your 250-foot setback. So that's, that's just what we're asking for. We've submitted with our application, an outline of how we feel we need, the criteria and orders we see, bringing from it. We, I don't know if you want us to go through that, but the things that we tried to stress in putting the application together is, is the fact that this isn't, isn't virgin property, it is, it's a redevelopment site. This is the, a lot of the things that, as we have a 250-foot setback to the river, that the focus of that is always environmental concerns of getting close to the river and the damage already down here with this current development. So in going in and reworking the land to get, to get the barn reconfigured in the manner that is asked to, we think that this would be consistent with the audience if we would be creating any additional development within that area that's not already, hasn't already taken place, and, and again, environmental concerns. We think that, again, the building's broken up into a couple of different structures like that. It's opposed to one large building, it's, the roof off is a lot easier to be enclosed by the ground as opposed to, right now, that's a lot of water that comes off of that plum building, and it doesn't get the proper treatment it should before it gets to the river, whereas as smaller chunks of development, we're more likely to get the proper treatment before it gets to the river. As part of the subdivision process, we've got the roadway drainage that we need to deal with, that we've proposed a couple of body retention areas that will handle all the runoff from the roadways, and the roadway intermodal will be built, and take care of all the drainage and appropriate treatment there. And beyond that, exclusive of the roadway, we're actually ending up with less impervious on site than presently. The fact that that big building and all the travelways associated with that, the gravel pavement, the concrete that goes along that would be coming out, we actually met loss of impervious exclusive of the roadway, of course. I think, again, the things that jump out to me on the application, again, contrary to the public interest, I think, as far as the public interest goes, we are, again, the 250-foot setback to being a blind concern, but I think that what we're doing is improvement over current conditions. So I think we're certainly not contrary to public interest. Consistent with spirit of the audience, again, I think falls into that same category of, from an environmental standpoint, what we're doing is it's going to be improvement there, we're less impervious, we're better, better treatment of the water before it gets down to the river. Substantial justice, again, I think the fact that we would be taking this, this monster structure out of the neighborhood and creating a real neighborhood, I think is definitely the right approach to a project like this. I think that that along with the property value issue, certainly getting homes in there as opposed to a big 20,000 square foot building, or even more, but I think that the neighborhood value should be much improved by one structure, and also the concern of what might go on in the structure in the future. As far as the unnecessary hardship issues, I think that, again, I don't think we would be here making this case if this was a fully wooded site. I think the fact that it was previously developed, that needs pretty significant work done to the site to make it, to make it function as it should under the current zoning, being urban presidential, I think this overall would be an improvement. As far as how it distinguishes from other properties in the area, I think one of the things that attracted Mike to the property is the ambition of the house is built the extensive river frontage, it's got over 1,000 feet of river frontage along the same falls. But then all of a sudden, when you apply a 50-foot setback to that beautiful river frontage, we have 54% of the property is restricted from the, that strip of 250 along the river. That takes out, that takes out over half of the property there. And I think that that's a definite situation. I think that's kind of what I, what I need to cover, but we want to cover, but I certainly have to answer questions when you order a proposal.
I'm sure there will be. Ms. Cass?
I'm going to start my questions at the moment. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Hensman?
Sure, I've got a couple. So as your application is worded, wouldn't it apply to, in other words, it's not divided into separate lots right now, it's just one parcel? Wouldn't the way your application is worded, give you granted relief for the entire property, allowing construction up close to the 175 feet?
Certainly not our intent.
I'm not saying that it is, but I'm just saying the way the application is granted.
Well, we specifically limit to, it's tied to this plan, which ties to lots four and five here. So there is specific boundary lines here for lots four and five, but I think it does...
We've also said we can't exceed what we've taken out, so there's a limit. It actually equaled out about exact, as it is, so that would be a second failure.
Now, did Dr. Bennett ever get the, was he given, granted a variance for approaching on the, no idea?
The grading that he did in there is severe. I find it almost dangerous, and I don't, I can't leave someone from it the way it is, but maybe, I mean, it's a huge structure, I don't know how he snuck it in.
I'm not sure how long it's been there.
Are there fire alarms, maybe, if someone's there?
Could you, so in terms of the 175 feet, so are you saying that that is, do you show on, on the diagrams there where the 175 feet mark is?
That brings us up to this house here.
The right, the right back lining lot of the house, or?
Yes, that would be, that would be the...
Can't go anywhere to that. Couldn't get any closer than that, so that would come along and be further. As it's drawn, you use the 175.
What we were trying to do was, again, this is an area that has been excavated, that I think you can see the abandoned car that's in the pile there, an area that needs to be recreated, reworked, but it's a, it's a beautiful house site there. We worked around the house site and built the lot and the setback around it.
Couldn't you, how long are the driveways into the houses? How many feet, for instance, on lot four, how long is that driveway?
So in this floor, we have about 170 feet of driveway. I'm sorry, about 170 feet of drive.
Okay. And if you shorten the driveways, could you, could you come closer to the 250 mark?
I think, I think we could. We've got a certain orientation that we've worked on for, again, part of, part of Lorax is the solar energy.
It's all going to be net zero, solar powered, no fossil fuel homes.
So we've worked, we've, we've got, again, a fairly rigid footprint from the fact that it's a, it's a barn, that we know, we know the size of it, we can't make sure of batteries, it comes that size. We've got the orientation that we're trying to work with for the solar...
I think you're hitting setback, setback in the front corner.
And here, so we certainly have opportunities to slide or push, and this is, this is our wish list. This is where it makes the most sense on the site. Can we play with that? If you tell us we have to, we can.
You know, I, in terms of the setback, I'm not aware of all the reasons for it. I think that one of it's got to be, you know, to protect the view shed from the river. I mean, it's something that I'm on a body of water, I'd rather see forest than residential property, that's my personal opinion. And I, and it looks like a fair, and so that's part of my concern, is that, you know, this is a property that community benefits from in terms of the view shot from the river.
So this is the existing tree line here?
Mm-hmm.
So these two lots don't require any tree removals to...
No, I hear you.
So certainly, these are, again, things that we tried to think through to see how we could work to get. There's certain, certainly benefits of being, from property, there's certain burdens that kind of, we're trying to mesh the two together.
Okay. Thank you. I don't think I have any further questions right now.
Mr. Castle?
Yes, I have several. In the application submitted, it states that the redevelopment includes subdivision of property into seven open space cluster lots. Did you use the density formula calculations and open space calculations per 8.7 of ordinance?
We did.
Okay, I didn't see him in the application.
So, no, that was part of our submission to the planning board.
Okay, and didn't meet it?
Oh, yes, that's how, that's how we determined what we wanted to do. We haven't been to, it hasn't been vetted by the planning board yet, that we can't go there until we stop and see if this is going to fall.
Yeah, but this is in the zoning ordinance, so...
Oh, yeah, no, it complies with it. If it doesn't comply, then we're...
Okay, it does comply.
It does comply, absolutely.
We have 7. something homes total, and we have the calculations standard.
Yeah, so as part of our submission to the planning board, we have the calculations. Let's start with our, our total area of 10.722 acres. We have wetlands on the property of 2.064. We have steep slopes of 2.487 acres. We deducted a 10% of the overall area, or 46,086 square feet for the roadway, that gets us down to a net area of 309,000 square feet divided by the minimum lot size of 43,560. That gives us a yield of 7.1 lots.
Good. And the current property has 10.7 acres with one house?
That's correct.
Associated carriage house?
Yes.
A 22,914 square foot car barn, and a 570-foot square foot barn. The car barn will be removed?
Yeah.
And will be replaced with three residential lots, because the car barn is on lots four, five, excuse me, five, six, and seven.
That is correct.
So you're basically removing a car barn to make three lots.
Correct.
Okay. Is there any other reason that's your, that's your removal of the barn? You know, I know that you're going to reuse the timber. Is there any...
No, and when Mike, Mike, Mike's first interest was in the home there, and like I said, he's a, he's a builder by trade, but I think that would, I know that talking with the planning consultant, John Krebs, is a lot of people have approached him over the years on a reuse of condominiums.
Yeah, but I'm talking about a zoning...
So it's in the residential zone, which actually can be up to four units per acre if it had sewer. So it's actually getting hired.
It doesn't have sewer.
It does not have sewer. But basically, that barn feels commercial. I think the neighbors will tell you, and when you stand there, especially that view he shows you where it's five stories high, it's in a huge hole, and I'm trying to think of a practical use for it, and unless you're an eccentric car collector, it's tough. Everyone says, if you could separate, really what we're doing is separating four very high-end, early 1800s barns that were, this guy has a taste for the unicorns, the special, and these barns are special. So really, what we're doing is taking four things that are stuck together into this obnoxious, I think 22,000 square feet wasn't counting, seven stories, it's bigger than that, and making it something that fits the neighborhood. It's a residential neighborhood. Other people who have looked at this property have had wedding venues, and there's been commercial thoughts, condominiums, apartment rentals, because how do you use such a uniquely huge item? And I think we found it. Leave it where it is, spread it out, knock it down and grind it, fill in these big holes.
And you're also creating three, three house lots.
There'll be four, right across that hole back, there'll be... There'll be one, two, three, four of that barn.
Okay, but then the other barn will be removed also and replaced with one residential lot.
So you see on the back of lot, see the back of lot four, there's a small barn that's very close. That's within probably 100 feet of the water, maybe.
Yes, and that's the barn.
I'm going to take that off and make a garage out of it for the main house.
Okay, yep.
But the carriage house itself is stunning.
Okay, answering my question. Sort of removal of the barns will also comply with zoning. 5.4.1 of the zoning ordinance would state that no action shall be permitted to change the boundary of a lot unless it brings a lot closer to conforming to the requirements of the ordinance. And makes no other aspect of the law to structures on a lot more conforming. So when you remove the two barns, you're starting with a legal blank slate, a property that you can develop.
Right, we're getting the barns, correct.
So, so the new development will consist of 10.7 acres with six building lots, a lot with an existing house and carriage house, and one open space lot. A road with the cul-de-sac can be used to access the properties and maximize the development. Because the whole ordinance states that if you have cul-de-sac, you know, you need less frontage. So, and you're complying with that. And the ordinance is pretty liberal, right?
We're drawing a hammerhead, and I think the planning board steer us back for fire purposes to that.
Okay. So as part of the subdivision, two houses will be built on subdivided lots that do not meet the 250-foot Salmon Falls River setback. Both houses are 175 feet from the Salmon Falls River and 75 feet into the buffer. And the elevation map, which I saw that was submitted, indicates that the entire parcel slopes 50 feet towards the river. So there's possible stormwater issues with, you know, with the entire development. So have this, you know, this is like the Chester Run Gun Club that you stated in the, or the Supreme Court case that you referenced in the application. But the applicant's wetlands consultant had testified that the product will not injure wetlands in light of the closed drainage system, detention ponds, and open drainage system. So what are you doing to protect the Salmon Falls River from pollution or impairments?
So what we're doing is, within the center of the cul-de-sac here, and in an area on the edge of the open space here, we're collecting all the water from the new construction of the roadway. And we've got two bio-retention areas that will properly treat, infiltrate back into the groundwater, clean runoff. This section over here, what we're proposing is a net decrease in pervious, which not only is it a net decrease, but just the fact that it'll be broken up into four separate houses is going to be much more advantageous from a runoff standpoint than this as a collective whole. Finally, again, part of the siding of the homes here, this is the start of the bank here. And we're not proposing to get into the steep bank down to the river. We're not disturbing any of the steep slopes on the property. We've identified the steep slopes, anything over greater than 25%. We're not proposing to disturb any of those, yet where we would cause future erosion. So we're proposing this area here that's already been disturbed, already flattened out here to keep it there. And again, this over here is, this showed in the stockade fence here, that is, again, I don't, in fact, that we're going to deal with this hole to the side. The natural grade down to the river doesn't start until the other side of this fence here. So our construction is going to be well back from the top of slope there as well.
I don't see that in the elevation map. But what looks like it slopes, that the entire lot slopes towards the river.
It slopes towards the river, but only when you get to here does it slope steeply. This here is a normal pitch. You drop from the roadway down that 150-foot driveway, we drop two, four, six, maybe seven feet over that 150-foot driveway. So it's like a, that's like a three and a half percent driveway. It's really flat. I don't know, really flat, pretty flat.
And so again, I have to ask you, is this something that you can show to the board saying that you did all these calculations for resources? I did all the stormwater studies and the Salmon Falls River will not be impaired? Because, okay, the reason I'm really pickling on this is the 250-foot setback is not arbitrary. This was actually, you know, it's referenced in the zoning ordinance. And it's also referenced on pages three and four of the Rollinsford Stormwater Regulations that the planning board uses. Also, you know, the new development is in the Rollinsford MS4 area, and it must follow the 2017 New Hampshire Small MS4 General Permit. And in section 2.3.6, Stormwater Management and New Development and, you know, redevelopment, well, it basically says that the Rollinsford Storm regulations were implemented under requirements of the 2003 MS4 permit, which is an EPA permit. So I am, and on top of that, the Salmon Falls River is a unique resource, which is part of the Great Bay watershed. So it's important tonight that, you know, that you show us that the river will not be impaired because it will affect the public health and well-being. Like, you know, the central water bodies that has impairments and it creates algae blooms. We just had one on women pond, and that's basically caused by overdevelopment. So I am concerned tonight that this will create a overdevelopment because it's more than just two houses being 135 feet away. You are taking a current use, which is one house, you know, with some barns. You know, someone bought, you know, 10.7 acres, and then he created a, basically a huge car barn. But now, all at once, you're going to have several houses. And it's going to have septic tanks. People's going to be washing their cars in the driveway. They'll be fertilizing lawns, washing their houses with chemicals. And the list goes on and on and on. And they're going to also have discharge from the roofs. And, you know, they might have sump pumps right in their basement. So there will be, this is a more intense use for the property. So have you done your study that you can present to us tonight and say the Salmon Falls River will not be impaired from this development?
I did not come prepared to make that case this evening. We did submit that report to the planning board that follows the guidelines of your stormwater regulations in the MS4 community has been submitted to the planning board. I did not anticipate discussing that this evening. I did not bring that with me this evening. But we didn't submit a detailed study of all the drainage conditions on the property. From an environmental standpoint, I have no doubt that this will be an improvement to the conditions of the Salmon Falls River over what's there. If we've got a couple of cars that get washed by homeowner versus the 60 or 70 cars that he had in that building, I'm certain that this is going to be an improvement over the fact that it's been an odd use there over the years. But the fact is that this is what's supposed to go on the property. He was the oddball. Again, we're the oddball. We'll bring him in with the, how this property is supposed to be developed. That, again, roof runoff is clean runoff. You have very minimal driveways in here. There don't be sump pumps, but again, some pumps are clean groundwater. We don't have, we're not looking at any of that major.
Yeah, unfortunately, some pumps is classified by the EPA as illicit discharge, unfortunately. Sump pumps from a full basement, if there's a crawl space. Okay, you know, these EPA rules, so it goes beyond the town or the state, unfortunately.
I'm going to try and just block out this.
Also, other questions?
Yes, and so the answer is no. But you do not have a study that you can present to us tonight that says that, that I did this study with the new development and it will not include the Salmon Falls River.
I think the main crux of our argument is that it's obviously a lot less. It's taking something that is less roof space and it's more spread out and it's residential rather than commercial in nature. It's not all happening in one area. So any logic would say that if you took that much roof and took four pieces out and spread them out, and the ones that are not, the reason they have the 250-foot setback is because the other things you mentioned with septic and sump pumps and whatnot have that 250. So really, it is these two houses. The rest are so far back that they don't, according to the state and your own rules, don't have any restrictions. These two being at 175 or 200 feet rather than the 250 are specifically because there are areas that have been annihilated and look like big craters there and really should be fixed. And the only way to justify filling in that barn and filling in these holes is if you're creating something different than what's there. Anybody that looks at the existing structure and has the exact same amount of coverage inside that setback that we're talking about, but minimized down, spread out, and taken care of by homeowners and landscaping and covenants that will say the restrictions, there are restrictions on pesticides and whatnot within that 250. And that will be in these people's deeds. And for the entire conservation land, it is going to have those rules incorporated into the, it's going to be commonly owned.
Okay, so you have conservation land that I wasn't talking about. So that's why I'm trying to ask these questions here.
So that whole back piece and the whole front piece, what we're trying to do is keep the land the way it is. When you drive by it and you see this beautiful field with these beautiful trees, we leave in that as conservation. That's going to be shared by the homeowners in the subdivision and all the water furniture. And it's going to be protected. There's going to be rules that say, this is how you groom wetlands, this is what you do, this is what you don't do, this is how it is at 50 feet. One of my specialties is sensitive land. And the reason I spoke up on top of Bob is that I'm proud of the fact that I take something that could have been condominiums or a wedding venue. And what I'm doing instead is there's going to be seven like-minded people who care about fossil fuels and emissions and care about the environment. And I'm going to buy deed perpetually forever. Deed that land is non-buildable and with a list of rules that are regulated. There's very, it would be a tough argument to say that this isn't better for the Salmon Falls River than leaving it like it is.
If it's not, okay, I guess I'm not getting out of battle because you're starting, you're going to.
If you have a question, why don't you ask a question? Rather than debating with the applicant, go ahead and ask a question because I know we have a butters present that may also want to ask some questions. I know I have some questions.
Okay, I'm done, Charlie.
Just to clarify, this is our open space across here. That's over four acres of open space. And there isn't any lot that owns any water on the Salmon Falls. None of them have river furniture that would have access to alter the river furniture. And then we have another acre of open space up front there.
Excellent. I have a couple of questions if I could. The auxiliary barn, so I think your petition refers to the car barn, which is, I think, towards the front of the parcel, towards Silver Street. Then the auxiliary barn, do you know when that was built?
It's very old.
It's old?
Very old.
They're thinking 1850s. The house is 1851. Carriage house falls right in line, and that barn does appear to be the exact same according to the preservation company we brought up there.
Okay, thank you. And the, so that obviously didn't need a variance.
Predates zoning.
Predates the zoning board. And as we get to the discussion about hardship, part of what I think we're going to be talking about is the relationship between the general purposes of the 250-foot setback. And so let me see if there's common ground on some of this. So I think Mr. Castle has done an excellent job identifying the stormwater protection aspect of the setback. But I think we could probably also agree that it's to protect soils, to protect vegetation, to protect wildlife habitat. Water quality, I guess, would be the stormwater thing. So those are the general purposes.
We would agree. That's, as I started off this evening, I don't think we would be here if this was a fully wooded piece of property. This is, again, the existing tree line that's out on the property now is figured something like that. These two lots here don't require any tree cutting. We put the roadway in, working around the trees within the property. So we've got, again, I think, from sensitivity from vegetation standpoint and any wildlife corridors that may be along the river, I think we're sensitive to that. We've stayed away from the steep slopes. Again, that could be a soil erosion concern. We're not proposing to work with it in the steep slopes. The septic systems, obviously, will have to go through the normal review process.
So I guess I'll preface, if I may, my next couple of questions, which are going to go to hardship. I appreciate the time and attention and your willingness to engage with us in discussing the parcel and all the steps that you're taking to try to protect the parcel. But I'm really struggling with this concept of hardship. Because, and I apologize for being crass, but to me, it seems like we're talking about the general purposes of the setback, which I think we agree are pretty substantial, with the difference between getting five or seven, or four or seven parcels in the cluster subdivision. In other words, we're talking about maximizing economic benefit, trading off against the general purposes of the setback. And for me, that doesn't meet hardship. And so give me your best explanation why it does meet hardship. And I'm happy to entertain it. I haven't.
I would start off with a different premise from the beginning. Is what we've gone through is, we've identified through the calculations in the zoning ordinance, what Tom has said, it's the appropriate number of lots given all the strengths of this property, steep slopes, wetlands, the size of the lot, et cetera. And we've come up with a number of 7.1. So we're looking for seven places that are appropriate to, that are good building sites to make a good neighborhood, a good successful project. And Mike is working very hard from the standpoint of the timber frame, barn concept. And so we've got seven lots. We're trying to figure out where to put them.
Yeah, but I guess that leads me to my next question, Mr. Stoll, which is, there are dozens, if not hundreds, of landowners in the town of Rollinsford who have steep slopes or wetland setbacks, or in this instance, Salmon Falls River reeds setback issues. And the ordinance is set up to, you basically have to discount those setbacks from determining your buildable, economically maximizable interests in the parcel. And if we grant this variance, how in the world do we explain that all of those dozens of? and hundreds of other landowners who will also come in and tell us, well, I could get another house lot if you let me build within 150 feet of the River. Or I could get another two house lots if you didn't require me to have the steep slopes exemption. So I just worry that if we find that this is a hardship, we open the doors wide open to basically guttering our river setbacks, our steep slope setbacks, all of the things that do constrain landowners in our country.
I would respect, I would expect that there are very few parcels in town that are over 50% of the property is unbuilt due to a single regulation. I would find that amazing. Again, what we're doing is trying to figure out where to place these structures. That's what we're doing. So does this guy go back and sit back here? He can't. But there's a big hole there with a building in it already that we would rather be here. And we're explaining to him, why would I rather be there? Why is that contrary to the spirit of buildings? Because the damage has already been done by the previous development. This lot here, we've got a beautiful field here that has a great viewscape, keeping with the open space ordinances. Do we want to stick a road front or toes over there on Silver Street? This is the plan that we developed and the rationale that we developed based on the fact that this, and if you look at the gravel access roads that have been built here, what we're building is an improvement on environmental concerns of stormwater runoff, wildlife corridor, illicit.
Each property should be looked at uniquely. I don't think that there's any precedent setting where all of a sudden you change setbacks. This is a unique property with unique restrictions that's been uniquely abused. And if someone came to you with the same criteria and said, if we were able to stretch this a little bit, we could make something really beautiful, you'll lose that deal in the front because of a hole that's already been done? I think it says, how does it use the word is, I forget you used the word to me earlier, but justify.
Again, the hardship issue, I think, is an unnecessary.
Right. The way you worded it is an unnecessary hardship. Is it necessary if I come in and I want to put a house on a setback? Of course you shouldn't. But in this instance, when there's already one there, are you creating an unnecessary hardship? Because you're saying, Mike, the land you bought has a five-story barn and a hole and a setback. You want to spread it out and pull it in and clean it up. But even though we don't think it hurts the neighbors, we don't think it does fit the character of the zone, we understand that you've stayed away from the major purposes and that you're willing to really be specific about it. But I feel it's unnecessary to say it can't continue when it's there now. If we do nothing, it's worse than if you let us do what we want. But it wouldn't stop the subdivision or the number of lots. Like Bob said, we respect that you have an equation that tells you what they feel is the fair number. And there's room to put seven houses in here. This pushing them against where they already are and spreading them out is, in my opinion, by far the most mature way to develop this land. Most people will put a road in the middle and houses on either side. They all look the same because the frontage costs money. In this instance, we're wasting 500 feet of frontage because we want to keep the character of what's there. The barn is an environmental mistake. I don't know if it was permitted. No one really answered the question at the planning board, but it's there. And you have to look at a redevelopment, different than development. It isn't fair to say these rules, as Bob said, we wouldn't ask for this if it wasn't a five-story barn already in this hole. We want to separate it, clean it up and move and stretch it out. We're not going to bring any structures here. This is literally fixing. The foundation of this thing is ridiculous. It's a drive under. It's intimidating. And I can't think of a better plan than to separate it. You have a 170-year-old house and a 170-year-old carriage house. What do you build in there that would fit the character? I mean, the luck of stumbling into this, the idea of separating it, the fact that it further meets what the zone wants, the fact that it's clearly an improvement over what's there is different. Unnecessary hardship. Somebody wrecked this hundreds of years or many years before leaving them alone. And it's been allowed, it's been taxed and treated as if it's a legal structure. And now we want to fix it. To 100% or to 90% because 90% is a better subdivision than doing it to 100% by far? It's a shame to put a house in that field in front of the property when the right place for it is already developed. I mean, it's been predeveloped. We're going to put growth where there is now a gravel pit. And I just need to know the difference between redevelopment, something's already been done and we're saying we're going to make it better, but not 100% to us coming and saying, can we invade something? We wouldn't do that. It's not my niche.
Thank you, Mr. Stoll. Ms. Cass, you deferred. Do you want me to go to a butter and come back?
Yeah, I don't have any additional questions.
Can I ask an additional question?
In your standard between the butters and their chances?
I have a quick, aren't you really saying here that, by the way, I'm very sympathetic. I think that your vision is an impressive one. But aren't you really saying that you're asking us to, you could have your open space, so to speak, out back where four or five are, and you're asking us to give you a variance for the setbacks so that you could have this open space up front where as you could, you could put house number four. You could put house number four. Can I sneak my, why couldn't you put house number four here? And then move this up a bit? Maybe move your driveway a little bit. That way, you're still, you put the house here, you still have your nice view up front, you're not, you would maintain the 250-foot setback. And by doing that, I just want to hear a lot about, have you considered that?
I think that that is an approach. Again, what we thought was a better approach and that's why we were asking. And as we have made our case on why ours is better, but I understand that.
That could become a house lot in front. It definitely loses the stature of what that property is. You have to almost stand or look and see that right now, it would be almost unchanged. From the street, you would almost not know that this property had been developed. And there's already a leveled out, cleared problem house site out there. And so try to use logic and say, well, does it make, maybe it doesn't make sense to disassemble the barn. If we have to look at different roads and different drainage and different plot setups, maybe this plan still makes sense or maybe it doesn't. We're looking at what's there and proposing something that we think is a lot better. But like Bob said, if people don't agree, I get it. It's just, I'm not saying that we could just scramble this anyway and I'd still do it. I'm going to make this one of the most beautiful subdivisions in Rawlinsford. And that front area is fakery. It's stunning. It's been that way for a long time. And it just feels wrong when someone's already, what you're trying to protect is already done. You can see the holes that we have to contend with over there. Now we want to cover them with topsoil and create root systems and trees and whatnot. It really is the best way to develop this property, I would.
Members of the, oh, actually, abutters first, but members of the public will also allow to address it. Any abutters wish to address or ask a question of the applicant?
I'd just say that.
If you could identify yourself.
Gail Flynn. I'm the one that lives directly across the street from this park and has that view.
And you can be on your address.
653 Silver Street.
Thank you, Ms. Flynn. Go ahead.
We've had, this has been on the market for a long time. And like somebody else said, people were looking at to make it into a wedding venue, which none of the neighbors wanted. You know, putting a road down the middle and having as many condos as I could, that just doesn't suit the property. I mean, my house was built in late 1800s, this house was. There's a special section down. There's some newer houses on the beginning of the road, the dead end road, but the ones toward the end are older. Mike was nice enough to contact all of the butters and the neighbors and meet with us and go over all of his plans. We like the open concept he's done. He talked about tearing down the barn, but when he found out what a gem it was, you know, and he just seems to really want to keep that historical flavor to the property. One of the things that I was most happy about is the fact that Mike and his family have bought the main house and are living there. So this is going to be his neighborhood, Jim. He's also been a developer for a while and we've looked into some of the other, and he does a beautiful yard. So I don't know a lot about setbacks in the waterway, but if he says that he's going to do what needs to be done to keep those safe, I tend to trust him. I think he's done enough of this in the past. And that meeting, I think pretty much everyone in the neighborhood, it may have been one or two people that couldn't make it, left that meeting feeling very happy about this plan. So just to let you know the background in that he has made us all a part of what he wants to do. It wasn't somebody that just came in and said, I'm doing this, I don't care what the neighbors think. So again, I don't know about saving the waterway and that stuff. That's something people that know more about would have to make decisions on. I think the plan he's come up with is great. The open concept, that's going to be common land for all the people there. The neighbors can use it, walk down to the water, you know, wait and enjoy it. And it just, I think Kathy's also in the neighborhood. I believe she believes the same. She'll let her talk to us if she wants to.
Kathleen Knowles? Thank you, Ms. Flynn. Kathleen?
Yeah.
Alice?
652 Silver Street. My two bedrooms upstairs view that awful monstrous thing on his property. And it has been many years and there's been many stuff coming, all the stuff coming in on trailers and whatever. And the land itself is beautiful. It was a farm when it first was built and my house and the house next to me were the tenants that worked on the farm. And then Mike Brown's house was the schoolhouse. And so it has a lot of history and it's very pretty. And it's just, it needs to become beautiful again. I mean, it's, and we're very happy that we're not going to have a lot of traffic down there with a lot of homes or a lot of apartments or something like that because it's a dead end street. And it just is a big improvement as to what these gentlemen want to do. And I understand that there's a lot that you guys have to consider, but.
I have just one more comment if that's okay. Guiding the big barn, the lower part of that barn was built by the previous owner with the Prasats for a horse barn. They had horses on that property. When Dr. Bennett came in, and I don't know any of the definite facts, but through, you know, word of mouth, so to speak, he built onto that barn. And like they say, it's five stories. The top story, from what I understand, went above the level it was supposed to be. Dr. Bennett often would do things that he wanted to do and then ask for permission afterwards. So, you know, but it is, Kathy's right in front of that barn. You can't, I mean, it blocks every view that's down there. It just doesn't go with the, you know, the house and the beautiful carriage house that sits on that property. So if that could be replaced with some nice homes, I think it would be an improvement, as Mike says. I think he's looking to improve the property. And I just like his attitude and how he develops properties. I think he's trustworthy in that sense. And the fact that he's living there makes it even more so that he's going to be looking at whatever he puts up.
Are there butters?
When I lived at 97, a Main Street in South Park, I was a former resident on Short Street in Rawlins, but I still hold a financial interest in that property and the store on the tax card as a owner to own that property. My ex also requested that I come here this evening and see what's going on. I will compliment the developer on what they've done here. Pretty darn nice. Nice, nice little subdivision. They did a good job. Plus also, by the way, I'm the former running chairman of the town. So I really like what I'm seeing here. On the barn, as Gail talked about, the, it originally, when I moved there in 97, there was nothing there. People bought it, the house from the Gantys. A horse barn went in, I think it was probably 30 by 60 or something like that. Dr. Bennett bought the property and then it grew. And both during that time, I was on the planning board as an alternate with Mr. Pugman as the chair. I know that both of us voiced, I voiced concerns about the ever-expanding footprint of the building. Keep in mind that, although at that time, the board of selection is lax. Would be a, you know, good word. They really didn't look at things too hard. And I think it was kind of this sad trivia that, you know, some things got away with. I never knew as a planning board that this was within the 250-foot setback. So, you know, I think, yeah, it was built legally, pretty much. The property was well cared for until Dr. Bennett took over the property. He did do a very nice stone wall in the front. He did put that in. The rest of the property, if you care about, but yeah, that thing off the side, getting that off, that was really a poor decision. One of the concerns that I would raise, and I think this is more from a planner and having been on the board and all that stuff, is the fact of encroaching into the buffer. That's there for a reason. It's been there for a long time. As we've looked at developments, I was heavily involved in the link with subdivision for both by the dump. We were really stringent as to, you know, where they want to put buildings, you know, the properties are well marked. If you notice, all the properties sit at least on the riverside of the road, pretty much on the road because of the 250-foot buffer. From what I personally see is that one lot of house could be repositioned and made to conform to the regulation. You lose one lot, that one lot is probably tough to build on, to get something in. You know, do I believe that you as a resident will put a house in the front and ruin that douche in? Nothing's good. Okay, I'm just saying. Let's put it this way. If it was, if I was the developer and I was going to lose one house lot to put, I was psyched to put a house right in the front, you know, but I'd do that pat. And I'd want to maintain my view and maintain my investment. So, but I think that you would be creating a dangerous precedent on brand and variants to this, to this setback. I really don't think there are no situations where, I know like within the last 20 years, we haven't done anything. You're probably going back another 15 and beyond maybe. The only place I could think of is potentially Wood Run. But I don't think there's anything with 250 there.
I think I was on the board just, I think the 250-foot setback was adopted just before or just after I got off the board, late 80s. just after I got off the board, late eighties. I think that Woods Run was our place. It may have been that the 250 was partly a response to how close the houses were. All right, thank you. Anything else, Mr. Man?
No, that's it.
Okay. Are there any other members of the public or abutters who wish to address the board or ask questions of the applicants? I'm going to give you all a chance to respond, but I want to see if Ms. Cass or any other members of the board have additional questions.
I really don't. I know it's uncommon for me, but...
All right. Kathy, see you first. Mr. Hinsman?
Your is yours.
I want to let Bob talk, but I did just want to restate that when we talk about precedents, every piece of property is completely unique. In my 30 years in real estate, I've never had a peninsula before. And as Bob said, I'd love to see another property that, eleven acres and almost six of it is encumbered by one setback. The lot equation says it can have seven houses. I don't think it's spite or greed to say that if I were to develop this, I would want to have the seven houses. It's very expensive. It's not a greed thing. So really, as Bob said, it comes down to, does it still make sense to me to do it somewhere else? And if so, there's only one other spot. And so I don't want anyone to think that if I can't put, sometimes you look at land and there's obvious, when you stand there forgetting all the paperwork, there's just obvious spots. And you really have to see that if this is a precedent, it would have to be another property where over half of it's encumbered by a setback that's already been predeveloped incorrectly and has major 14-foot deep craters. I mean, there are reasons why I'm saying unnecessary hardship. Somebody, you're not allowed to put paint on that brick, but somebody already put paint on the brick. And it's a much better system what we have in mind. There's a, when you go in there, there's a logical way that it feels like it should be. It's really hard to convey with paper. But when you wipe out this setback, even though it's already, what you were protecting against this happened to a horrible degree. It, all it leaves is that front corner. And so that is what would happen, is your typical, it will be more of your typical lollipop cul-de-sac, standard subdivision. In fact, it could just be bigger lots where the waterfrontage gets divvied up into seven different families. There's different ways to do it. This, I'll stand to the day, I appreciate people noticing my sincerity and my enthusiasm. I will stand with the same statement until I can't anymore, that there's a right way of doing this. When you look at that area, this aerial shot doesn't do it justice. When you look at that barn, when you look at this area, it's a shame. And to put it for what the zone really wants and to put protections in place and to forever deed it so that it can never happen again, and these rules are attached to the deeds, is a huge improvement. And if someone says I can make it a lot better, when there's a pre-existing development, it's not a new development, it's a redevelopment, somebody already did something. And so there really is a lesser evils. And I just don't see how someone comes in here and says, "Hey, can I go 175 feet off the Sanibel River he did?" We had to look at each piece unique into its own stance. This piece, if there ever was one, because of its history and because of the way it lays out, is a logical one. I don't, I can't imagine a better argument or even a similar argument from somebody else. I don't think you're disrespecting the setback. I think you're taking something that's here, that's not contested, that it shouldn't be here, and allowing it to get better. Not forcing it to 100%, but looking at the fact that sometimes there's a gray world where it's bad and we can make it better. I'm not, it's not good and we can make it, we're not going that direction. We're going in a direction that's clearly taking something and putting it the way it's meant to be. I don't feel that there's a greed factor. I really feel that this is the way that this should lay out, that the things that are supposed to be respected are. I mean, I want to leave it to Bob, but as he mentioned, that more than half of this lot is in that setback and the other half is stunning, historical, and has so much history. It's a shame, but at the end of the day, if someone wants to look at this as just merely a setback waiver without looking at the unnecessary hardship, the damage is done already. Are we really pushing something that has no benefit? It doesn't benefit the neighbors, it doesn't benefit the neighborhood, it doesn't benefit the viewscape, and it doesn't benefit the river. There's a flat hollow hole that can remain or be filled in with sod and trees and bushes and plants and regulated and watched, but it's there. I mean, I guess one of my, I really feel it's different because somebody did it, or didn't, or was paying taxes on it. It's been done and it's a shame. And I want to fix it. And there's no need to go in there and fill all these holes and regrade if you can't put a house there. You're not going to just go and spend that money to remove that barn and fill it in and then try to incorporate it back to the way it should have been. It's just, it's a really very logical, when you stand there, you can see the distance and the buffer and all the important things are not being affected. Literally, that house is being shown on a scrubbed-out hole that we would bring up and make a good buffer and be a good neighbor to the river. I don't know if you had it.
I really, I really don't have much to add, but I mean, we put it together, I think Mike and I agreed that, again, we've been doing this a long time. We're pretty pleased with how it laid out. We spent a lot of time on the property, finding, finding good spots.
What's most sense for the property as opposed to drawing it on paper and then just force them to property to comply?
One thing that kind of stuck up on us was this river frontage over here that leaves our furniture, that creates a setback on us. That was a late entry to our plans. I'm not sure we, again, kind of fell in love with the building sites over here before. We saw that that doesn't turn out to be exactly the way it is on the, on the town maps. So it pulled over quite a bit, but again, I think, from our standpoint, those were very good building sites. And I mean, really, when I read 3A, one, no fair, in substantial relationship exists between the general purpose of the ordinance and the specific application of provisions to the property. Again, if, as, I have heard that now before, the bricks have already been painted, enforcing it for the sheer, sheer need to enforce it, I think that's what that is all about, is the damage is already done for the purposes that are put in place. The horses are already out of barn, that have gotten, the bricks have been painted.
It is a shame what happened there. There's no way around it. And this conversation is to try to fix something. And in other towns, they have looked at redevelopment, not as grandfather, not as okay to pollute rivers, but certainly as something that if we can make it better, we're doing our job. We don't have to necessarily be perfect. Sometimes that actually could have a worse effect. I know it seems arbitrary, just throw the house across the street and maybe that's, you know, the road that ends up happening, but it's a shame. It's, I'd love to walk into you guys in a sunset and it's a shame. So we're good.
Okay. Before closing in, any questions?
Yes, I've got one.
Yes?
You know, this is coming from the storm, stormwater regulations and it says here runoff from egregious services shall be treated to achieve 80% removal of total suspended solids and at least 50% removal of both the total, the hydrogen, the total phosphorus using appropriate treatment measures. It's specified in a New Hampshire stormwater mandate. Will your development be...
Yes.
So therefore practically...
Okay, thank you. Mr. Hinsman?
Yeah, no further questions.
I have one question. Was any consideration, Mr. Brigham, given to possibly changing the Lot Four portion to maybe the open space portion? I know that you, you know, the visual, I'm familiar with this property and it is lovely. But as Mr. Hinsman pointed out, you know, if you situated the house closer to the cul-de-sac, you would retain that, that view and the encroachment onto the 250-foot setback would be less egregious. Was any consideration given to that?
Yeah, Bob and I went through so many scenarios. There's a lot of things to consider, how much open space you're supposed to have, drainage, I can answer some of the other questions. When you stand out there and look at it, it will feel different than it does on paper. The barn, the barn and the barn development has completely trashed and dominated one whole slice of the subdivision and the rest of it is just virgin, beautiful, untouched. To keep the development where it happened already and not suck it in in front of the Victorian, you won't see the Victorian, what he considered almost spiteful to put it there and what all the abutters have said to you, is believe it or not, their hardship is worse in not granting this. They look at this and instead of being in someone's fenced backyard with dogs and kids and swing sets, I'm proposing picnic tables and walking trails and something, there's going to be a walking trail between the carriage house and the Victorian, which is already delineated, so that everyone in this neighborhood of mine and around it have the right to come down. You have a little paddle boat and some, you know, it, to take that, to take the whole side of this property and just bomb, like a bomb hit it, and then to say, "Well, I'm not allowed to go over there, so now I'm going to go across the street and do it again." It's a shame. All I can say is, yes, a lot of thought went into it and it may end up being how this ends up happening or maybe it, I don't know, but it's a shame when you look out there and you see that somebody developed a third of this property and if we can keep the development there, it's so much better. I mean, that, that house is going to block the entire property. You can see it all the way from Route Four now. It's, it's meant to have that grandeur. It's an estate property. I feel like I'm being a warden of it and I feel like this is the most mature way, is keep the development where it already happened. And that's why I keep making the distinction that, that somebody did this and that we're only talking, I know it's 50 feet, you know, or 75 feet for just one small box that's already, it's being moved. It was in the setback and we're just proposing to move it.
But that's what I'm asking.
Yes.
You know, and, and I am respectful of your vision and I do appreciate that because, you know, there has been a lot of thought that's gone into this and, you know, dissecting the car barn and moving it, but possibly not moving it onto what's designated as Lot Four. You know, possibly changing Lot Four to the open space and the open space into Lot Four. Again, it's just, it's a little, it's not as egregious into that wetland setback.
It's one of the things we looked at and it's a possibility. It might be reworking the road and drainage and it certainly will change. You could go to this property tomorrow, I mean, after it's developed and never know that it was developed under this scenario. It's taking the land that was wrecked and fixing it and putting the houses there.
Or the alternative is decreasing it by one lot. I understand that, you know, by the regulations and the, and the footprints, then, right, you know.
That's the biggest problem, is it's just that the equation started early in. How many, what are the, don't ask for a variance for an extra unit. Don't ask for a variance for some crazy business. All I'm saying is can I take something that's in a setback and slide it over so it's still in the setback while filling in the grading, replanting new vegetation, making what any, if you lined 100 engineers up and asked them, they would all say, you're taking what you have because you can't just pretend like it's virgin soil and making it the best you possibly can. And that's really what all this thought went into at that point.
I was just going to say that if you go to page two, after the barn picture, the first picture after the barn.
Is it on the first handout? This handout?
Yeah. Back on one more. This guy here is, is at the stone wall up front as the driver come in. And you can, you can see that we catch the corner of the existing barn. So that's, that's here looking in and you're just getting a glimpse of this here. So that was the idea on, on the placement of these. I mean, I can't commit to life, but certainly this, this lot can exist the way it is and just pull far back, pull it out.
Well, we have it right now, it's sitting, there's a 14-foot drop. It's hard to see right there, but where he's drawing, there's all these elevation lines tight. So there's a 14-foot drop so that he can drive under. What I've done is set the house half in the hole and half not. So from the road, you're going to see the front of the house. From the back, the basement is filling in the hole and then we'll come and we'll fill in everything else around it. It's what I meant when I said a walkout. Because we're into a slope, we end up with a drive-under garage or a walkout basement. So that house was specifically set so that the front of it seems the same elevation as the road and the back of it will, will help us fill in this monumental hole. There's a, 14 feet deep, I think, is not overestimating how deep it is right there. Could you pull it into the, into the street with a short little driveway? Yes. Could the one that we're asking to be at 175, be at 200? Yes. If we really just broke this down to one house 50 feet further, I could maintain the integrity of what I think this property deserves. If we can't, it's your rulebook and I respectfully fully understand.
So is that appropriate or inappropriate in this form to discuss alternatives?
Let me, there are two answers to that. Yes and no. Yes, it's your time and you're welcome to make any arguments to the board that you want. Personally, I'm inclined to the view that the zoning board of adjustment is not a good, we're not well-suited to that frankly. We're fairly new to the, to the complexity of the ordinance. Even though I was on the planning board for 20 years, I'd forgotten a lot of what I used to know. And both, you know, with all respect to Dr. Bennett, God rest his soul, if he's passed on already.
He's still around.
He's still around. With all appropriate respect to him, my worry is that a lot of well-meaning people bent the rules because of the complexity. Mr. Dr. Bennett was both a fast talker and quick to sue and people backed off when he asked them. And so I worry that we are not the board to kind of wheel and deal on whether it's 50 feet or this many feet or what conditions to put on parcel four and so forth. And it's, it's one of the things that we just struggle with as a, with our, with enforcing our ordinance is that the select board is overburdened, planning board is overburdened, and, you know, they're volunteers and we're volunteers. The select board is volunteers. So this is, so make whatever argument you want to and we'll certainly consider it for, however the individual board members can take it.
I just repeat that it's a, it's a unique piece of land and that's why you have a ZDA. If, if the rules were, read the rulebook, there wouldn't be a ZDA. But there's a ZDA because not everything is the same. That sometimes you might run into a situation where someone's trying to redevelop a five-story barn and a hole and a setback and you'd have to use some judgment to say, in a normal world, would I give this if it were not the situation? No. But it isn't black and white. Real estate never is. This is a very unique piece of property. The abutters, they've been here for decades, like the way it lays out. They've expressed a displeasure in, in other ways and it's done already. Most people aren't coming to you saying, "Can I take a problem and make it less?" And that's a nice request because it's here already. The other question is can I just do nothing and here it is? And it's a shame because when someone says, "Can I make something better?", even, even in the commercial construction world, if you're remodeling a, a property, it's different than if you're building a new... if you're building a new one. They say, no, you can't have sprinklers in this room because the cement's too thick or because of some other reason why something happened before you came along. Sometimes you have to make the best of what you have and it's not, doesn't seem fair or right to just say, hey, the rule is this, there's a good reason for the rule, I'm not going to bend on it. If I do, I feel that I've somehow opened up floodgates. The planning, the ZBA specifically here, because every property is unique and every situation is unique, that right there, that whole five-story big drive under, you know, it's got four-inch concrete floors, needs to be jackhammered out of the ground and the level from where you see those trees to the back of that car was a nice slope and it was supposed to be. It wasn't supposed to be a stone wall with drainage pipes. I don't know how Dr. Bennett got the permission, but now it's permitted and if the ZBA has an opportunity to make something better, I just don't want it to be so hung up on the rule that's being done without the story that is specific to this. That's it.
So my question was, would you consider altering your request?
Hearing your concerns have led me to think that it is very serious, even though I'm making it better and I felt like that was enough, there's a room in there to make it even better. Instead of saying, can we get a hundred and seventy-five foot setback for two lots? That we could say, could we just change it to a two hundred foot setback for one lot? It's not reeling and dealing as much as addressing concerns as soon as they came out. To take, to take another house and push it forward, it won't be the drive under, it's not the ideal situation, but it can be done and maybe in the long run, it's the right thing to do. If I could say that we could keep one of the lots at two hundred feet, I'd push everything as far forward and close to the road as possibly able and be able to re-vegetate these areas and to regrade them the way they were supposed to be. If it just becomes open space, I guess that's the open, I mean, that, please compare what I'm showing you to what's there and not this ideal situation that this thing had already been protected because it really is a shame I can make this much better. I really can make it a lot better than it is.
Mr. Stoll, Mr. Brigham, thank you very much. Members of the public and the abutters, thank you all very much. I appreciate your care and your energy that you put into your presentation tonight. It's all been very thoughtful and I appreciate the way you've engaged with all of us. My least favorite part of being a member of the ZBA is that we must deliberate in public. And so we are going to close the hearing and we are now going to deliberate live like we're some sort of reality TV show. And we will struggle with it. So I'm open to either having a motion on the floor or just general conversation and then followed by a motion once we get a sense of where the consensus of the board lies.
I'm happy to call in first, so I'll call in first. So, and I think the one benefit of an open deliberation, the app is to hear about it. One thing I wrote to the chairman of the, yeah, this is the idea of a sidewalk. When I initially, I came into this thinking I was going to vote in favor of it and now I'm pretty much decided I'm going to vote against it because of the importance of the setbacks and that I think the applicant could make, although he's got a fantastic vision and I think it's beautiful, I also think that two hundred and fifty, fifty feet setback is extraordinarily important for all the things that Paul said and just my own personal concerns and that, you know, some adjustments could be made that may not be quite what the applicant wanted, but still could be a beautiful project. So a part of me wonders a lot whether he might want to withdraw the request and come back with a modified request to let us, but I think, what I'm saying is, I don't think that we are equipped. We've already been here an hour and forty-five minutes and I don't mind that, but I don't think we are equipped to handle a modified application, you know, midstream. I often say to judges, when I ask, I say, I'm ninety percent preparation and ten percent inspiration meeting, to the extent that I'm as successful at all, it's that I need time to prepare. I'm not fantastic on my feet. So I think, you know, the applicant's vision for this property is tremendous, but I'm hung up on the amount of the encroachment on the, what he's asking for and especially Lot Four where I see that an adjustment could be made. So I'm openly leaning against it right now. If I think, in effect, I'll say unless the board convinces me otherwise, I would be voting in opposition to the request.
Mr. Cazell, a miscast?
Mr. Hensman has summed up my feelings as well. I commend Mr. Brigham for his vision and, you know, what he intends for the lot, but I just, I can't support it just because of how far into that two hundred and fifty-foot setback he is encroaching. So I tend to agree that I would, you know, I would be willing to adjourn and see if the applicant is willing to adjust, but I too would be a denial of this application as it's presented to.
Yes, I also agree. I can see that the applicant is really trying hard to improve this property and he's creating special conditions on the property which will protect the river. But I don't think it's been told to us in, given enough detail. So at this time, I'm leaning towards, you know, denying the variance also because the facts have not convinced me or the testimony hasn't convinced me that, that the river will not be, you know, be affected from this development.
We would normally be prepared at this point to offer a motion and vote on it. Having heard the board's deliberations, do you want to stay with your application? Would you like to come back for, you know, let's say we would not adjourn, we would recess this hearing and then come back to consider a revision to the plan in the application?
So I think that we would obviously, if we see the flavor and withdraw. I don't know that we'd come back. I mean, to be honest with you, none of you have left any grain. When you look at that and say, I don't see how taking a small piece of that and erasing the rest of it, you've proven the benefit to the river. I don't see how I could convince you to. I'm trying to show you something that's existing versus something that's much, much smaller and much better. And if you don't see the benefit to that, what would be the reason to come back? I mean, I honestly am surprised, but I can also see the writing on the wall. There's no need to vote though.
No, we owe it to you to give you a written decision and we're happy to do our job.
Could we just withdraw with the concept that no, maybe?
As far as I know, you may.
I don't have a problem if you want to.
Yeah. If it would be helpful to you as you consider it. So as I indicated to you, I think that your best arguments were on, your best arguments were on not contrary to the public interest because you had damaged land and you're trying to improve it, you know, and so on the public interest piece, you had a strong argument. Spirit of the ordinance, I want to come back to because I really struggle with that one as well as hardship. The substantial justice element is, again, you've made a strong argument for why your neighbors are in support of the proposal and why it's in effect undoing an injustice that Dr. Bennett did to the land, to this unique parcel. And you've done, made an excellent presentation in terms of surrounding popular, property values. I think it's the question of fair and substantial relationship between the general public purposes of that setback and the specific harm or the specific application to this parcel. And in that regard, I think that you're right, Mr. Brigham. We must, we must look at this parcel. But in doing that, we also have to be aware that the grounds for asking for the setback is somebody else basically committed intentional harm on the parcel, so therefore you must give us the variance. And I do worry that a lot of people come in and point to something that's on the property that somebody else did. I worry about creating incentive. Dr. Bennett, again, he has a lot of wonderful qualities, but I think he took an existing footprint and went up and maxed it out. And oddly enough, the two hundred and fifty-foot setback does a great job saying you can't have buildings. It does a lousy job protecting the actual land itself because you've got all the cars and the gouging out.
And what part of the structure is in it as well?
But what I worry about is that the actions of a previous landowner are not a hardship. They are, they're a constraint, they are an impact that you and sadly your neighbors are all having to deal with. But I just worry that it's asking us to do an awful lot. I hear a lot of support from the board and I think in the same spirit, if you can trust us that we really appreciate how much energy you've put into this and how sincere you are. If you want to, you know, withdraw and come back, we'll give you another hearing. We're, we may not be the smartest ZBA on the face of the planet, but we are willing to do our job and we do mean to do it as well as we humanly can. So we're happy to give you another listen and.
Are you like insinuating in some way that if it were smaller and just one home, that it'd be, I mean, I don't, I see your concerns as being black and white and nothing, so I don't know what I could come back and actually expect you guys to.
To do?
I'm looking for some direction instead of a no of if it were like this. You know, I've had other boards say if they were just a little denser or a little closer, but if it's a no, it's a no. This is now going to knock us off of obviously the next week planning board meetings if you guys don't want to come to that and.
I have to be very careful not to make promises because we have to.
No, I understand that, but I think if I listen to what you say, you've made your answer clear, I don't know how.
It's a lot easier to look at a fifty-foot variance on one parcel than to look at two seventy-five-foot variances off of that, particularly given the importance of that, the riverine setback. That is, there is an element of our community, and I don't mean this in any way to be a negative statement, but there's an element of our community that views that riverine setback as sacred. And in terms of the environmental values that are represented by that setback, again, it's a lot easier for us to look at something that's more like a de minimis variance than something that's a third of the way into that setback.
Can you all be available to meet again soon? I mean, I'm happy, we kind of verbally threw out there and I guess that's not appropriate, but the fact is that based on what we're hearing from you, we would love the idea of literally just asking, can we invade that by only fifty feet on only one lot on a structure that's already in it, greatly reducing the amount of structure that's in it now, specifically to keep and maintain a certain respect for the land. And I know it's an inconvenience, you guys came here just for us and we're asking the question and we already have our thoughts, but if it has to be done in a formal manner where everyone has to come back, that would be the only other question I could possibly ask. I think I could, I think I could still make it beautiful with a fifty-foot setback on one lot and if that's something that there's a possibility for, we'd love to try it. If it's just an insult because you've all stated your tax, then I don't want to waste everyone's time.
What are the noticing procedures as far as?
If we recess this meeting, I don't think we need to do a full.
Could we make it? I mean, obviously it would.
We would have to agree to a date right now.
We would have to agree to a date right now, so we can pull out our calendars.
I would like that. I mean, I don't want to push anything. I don't want to be where I'm not wanted. I really feel that this is a strong enough justice that it's worth, it's worth talking about further.
Okay. So Sarah, you're better at this than I am. Do you want to start throwing out some dates?
Okay, so how's the Thursdays for anybody?
How's what?
Thursdays.
Thursdays generally good?
Thursdays are good for me until the start of the new semester.
Okay.
I work here till seven. That's a super.
Okay, got it.
Yeah.
So the only Tuesday I have available in July is the twenty-third because I have planning the ninth, the sixteenth, I have plans on the twenty-third.
Are the board members open to a Wednesday or is a Tuesday the only day that works?
I'm open to a Wednesday.
Are you? Yeah, I can do a Wednesday.
Paul?
Yeah, Wednesday would be good, twenty-fourth would be good.
I'm available the seventeenth or the twenty-fourth. Not the twenty-fourth.
The twenty-fourth of June is already booked.
Okay.
So the seventeen?
That works for me.
I don't know how many trials I take, so.
How about you, Paul? I think you.
Yes.
That's the seventeen.
So that would be in two weeks.
Exactly.
Does that agreeable to you? Okay.
So we will recess this proceeding until July seventeenth at?
Six P M.
Six P M.
Can we not do six?
Six fifteen-ish.
Six thirty, would six thirty be easier, Charlie?
No, I can make six o'clock.
Six is not a date, okay.
Thank you very much.
No, thank you and thank you all who've attended this evening. We appreciate your effort. So we are in recess until six fif, six fifteen P M.
Six fifteen?
That's some six fifteen.
Call us later, please.
And we will come to you prompt and we will reconvene the hearing at that time.
On the?
On the July seventeenth.
Or am I need to make a motion to?
So just so that we're clear, the current application is being withdrawn and will be resubmitted with new documents. I think we'll do it under the same docket as nineteen oh four as basically an amended petition so that you don't have to completely rewrite it. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.